I have seven thirty up there.
Please, everyone. Let me follow the order for our observant planning board meeting of November third, 2021. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the open public meeting?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Diaddio.
Here.
Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Genaneris. Mr. McEnone. Councilwoman Marr. Ms. Ochenge.
Here.
Ms. Patel. Ms. Palowski. Mr. Tai. Chairman Davis.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Alferri.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Memorialization of resolution?
None this evening.
Okay, thank you. Minutes?
None.
Communication agenda?
None.
Site plan and subdivision?
This evening, we have the first one, Quality Food Products, Inc., DBA, Quality Wine and Spirits Site Plan. They were carried from the ten twenty twenty-one meeting, nineteen eighty-four Route thirty-five, South Amboy, Block four twenty-four, Lot three.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Himmelman, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Quality Food Products. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this application. We have three witnesses tonight, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the application. I know you're familiar with it, and then we can proceed with our presentation. So as the board secretary indicated, so the applicant is Quality Food Products, Inc., doing business as Quality Wine and Spirits. The applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan and bulk variance approval. And for the record, Mr. Chairman, the property is identified as Block four-two-four, Lot three, of course, here in Saraville, and otherwise known as nineteen eighty-four Route thirty-five. As you know from the plans that were filed, the applicant proposes to demolish two existing buildings on the property and to construct an eighty, eight thousand two hundred and fifty square foot footprint addition to the remaining existing masonry building at the rear of the property. Included in the relief sought, the applicant seeks a bulk C variance approval for maximum building coverage pursuant to your zoning regulations. As it proposes, twenty-eight point two percent and twenty-five percent is required, and eighteen point nine percent is existing. We also have two, present two pre-existing non-conforming variances for side and rear yards which relate to the rear warehouse which are being eliminated as a result of the proposed improvements. The applicant is proposing eleven parking spaces, and seven parking spaces are required. We also have several waivers which our engineer will, will get into in greater detail. Also, for the record, the applicant is in the wholesale liquor distribution sales business, and its inventory is stored in the warehouse building. The property is located in the B-three highway business zone district, and wholesale sales are defined and are permitted use in that zone. Mr. Chairman, as I indicated, we have three witnesses tonight. We have the applicant, Sandy Kim. We have our architect, Satan Roial, and Mark Lieber, our engineer. So if the board does not have any questions, or Chairman, you do not at this point, I'd like to bring the applicant up as our first witness. Okay. Yeah, go right here. Yep. And you're right, and we'll have to have this one, if you hold back. Do you want to swear or in?
Yes. Please state your name for the record.
I'll do it, raise my right hand.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine, you can raise your right hand.
Sun Min Kim.
Can you spell it for the record?
S-U-N like Nancy, G-M like Mary, I-N like Nancy.
Can you, put your hand up. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alferri. Ms. Kim, I would like you first to explain your title and position with the applicant, Quality Foods, and also how long have you been in, in business currently as it exists? Thank you.
I am the president of Quality Food Products, Inc. The company has been in existence since nineteen seventy-three. I purchased the company in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. And can you briefly describe the nature of the business, both from an operational standpoint as well?
We are a wholesale distribution company. We primarily distribute beverages, being non-alk and alcohol beverages, to around nine hundred stores, liquor stores throughout New Jersey.
Okay. And you've heard of me describe a little bit about the, the relief and the nature of the application, but could you explain a little bit about the application and why you're seeking the relief and the expansion?
Currently, we have maximized our space, especially for inventory. So we struggle right now to store inventory to keep up the business sales, and so we're looking to expand, to primarily build storage for the wholesale business.
And is there a retail component to the business?
No. We are not allowed. We don't have any retail.
And it's not open to the public?
No.
Okay. And your anticipated hours currently, and will they be modified should the board act favorably upon the application?
The current hours are Monday nine through five, Tuesday through Thursday, five-thirty to five, and then Friday, five-thirty to three. Those hours will remain the same. No weekend hours.
No, so you're closed on weekends?
No, you're closed.
Okay. And the total number of employees that you have now, and will that be modified if should the board act favorably upon the application?
We have nineteen employees. Nine are remote, and then seven are drivers, two are in the office.
Fair enough. So the, the remote meaning they work from outside the, outside the property?
Right.
Okay. And what about the type of vehicles that are used in your operation?
We currently own five straight box trucks between fourteen and twenty feet, and we have two cargo vans.
And that, and that will be consistent should the application be favorably acted on?
We may add one or two vehicles, but they'll stay within the box truck size.
Okay. How often are deliveries made at the property, and what types of vehicles are used for the deliveries?
We generally get around two to three deliveries a day for the smaller sized trucks, like the box trucks that'll come in, single axle, and then around two to three times a week, we'll get the larger trailers during the busy season. During off-season, it's about only one, once a week.
Okay. Did you want to add anything else, or you think you've covered everything you'd like to address with the board?
I think that's it, unless anyone has questions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any further questions of Ms. Kim, but obviously she's available to answer questions of you, of the board, or staff.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Himmelman.
Yes.
I, I noticed you brought up a couple of points about employees and trucks and everything. Being a businessman, or being involved in some businesses myself, are you suggesting that we limit the amount of employees or trucks in this application? I, I don't understand why you...
I'm only addressing that only because of the comments from your professionals about the number of parking, and they wanted us to address the delivery schedule and just generally an overview of the operation so that you guys...
I couldn't understand delivery schedule and parking spaces. I mean, I don't care if you buy another truck.
Fair enough.
If you hire more employees, eventually, you know, employees may not want to work from home. You know, I don't know why you're bringing up that as part of the application, but I, I would suggest, or maybe your attorney will affirm that you don't want to be limited to that?
Fair enough. Very good point. I, I, we take that under advisement.
I'll be sending you a bill, Mr. Himmelman.
Thank you, Mrs. Diaddio. Duly noted. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll put Mark on, yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mark Lieber testify. We have to have him sworn in and qualified as well. Give him a chance to get settled.
Hi, good evening.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please spell your name and state it for the record?
Yes, it's Mark with a C, and my last name is Lieber, L-E-B-E-R, and I am with East Point Engineering in Marlborough.
Very good. Mr. Lieber, can you give a brief background of your CV and your qualification?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Himmelman. We have your professional background. Are you licensed and stated in Jersey?
Yes, certainly.
I was just doing that.
Oh, okay.
You know what? I think I'm gonna sit there. You could probably do this better than me, anyway. How many here, how many public meetings have you been to, right? Probably more than I am.
Okay.
In any event, just to follow up as to Diaddio, can you just provide a brief background, your CV and your, your qualifications as an engineer, and you're also going to testify as a planner, so both, please?
Yes, thank you. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. Following graduation, I went on to Rutgers Graduate School of Management in Newark where I completed an MBA program. And in two thousand and four, I was licensed as a professional engineer. In two thousand and five, I was licensed as a planner, and in two thousand and six, I finished the certified municipal engineering, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we accept his credentials.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieber, just for housekeeping, you have brought an exhibit with you tonight, and is that, I understand, is that exactly what was filed with the board for purposes of marking the exhibit?
Yes, I brought three things with me tonight. The first one is sheet two of the plans that were filed and last revised on September seventeenth. I just added a little bit of color to it. The next one is going to be sheet five. Again, I added color to that as well. And then I brought something with me tonight, which is a couple of photographs of the property for everyone to go through with me, which I think we'd have to mark as a new exhibit.
Okay, why don't we mark that as A-one? Is that okay, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna hand those out, actually.
When were the photos taken?
So the cover photo is an aerial, which is from, you know, Google, and then the next two pages, I took these photos today.
Okay.
Good.
So let me... Pass those out.
Mr. Lieber, would you walk us through the application and explain the relief that's being sought, and take us through the site plan, and then we can address the, any comments made by the board's professionals? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with sheet two. This plan is entitled Existing Conditions slash Demolition Plan, and we use the property survey as a background to create this drawing. So what you see here is the track boundary is in red, Route thirty-five is in dark gray, and the property that we're here to discuss, which is Block four twenty-four, Lot three, is in the center. The street address here is nineteen eighty-four Route thirty-five. This lot, it's not really a square, but it's an average of two hundred and twenty-five feet deep and a hundred and ninety-five feet wide. Along the highway, it says there's two hundred feet of frontage, and there's two driveways in and out onto the highway. So with those dimensions, the property's about one acre. It is in the B-three, which is a highway business zone district, and the nearest cross street is just about one lot north, which is Cath Street with a K. On this plan, you'll see there's three buildings outlined in blue. So the first is a one-story building in the front of the property. If you include the covered porch, that building has about a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot footprint. On the back corner, there's a forty-five by ninety-foot commercial rectangular building. That's also one story. That's about four thousand and fifty square feet. And then on the right side of the property, you have a two-story all-brick building, which is residential, and that's a one thousand eight hundred and seventy square foot footprint. Now, all this gray that you see in the middle of this plan, it's more or less a, an asphalt and gravel parking lot. There's no specific delineation for parking spaces or ingress egress. It's more or less just a free-for-all right now. And then within that parking lot, you have nine container trailers. Each trailer is roughly eight feet by forty feet, so you have three on the north end, four on the east end, and two on the south end. Topography and from drainage perspective, if you want to call the corner at the back left the north corner, you have a high elevation there of eighty-one on the ground, and the entire property slopes down through Route thirty-five. At the entrance, it's elevation seventy-three, so the property slopes down about eight feet from one corner to the other corner. While the building is on public water, there is no public sewer available, so there's a septic system, which is on the south end of the property, which is connected to the bathroom in the commercial building and then the residence. Let's take a look at the photos here on A-one. So starting with the aerial, I have, again, the property is in the red outline. You'll notice the three buildings, the two that have the, like reddish color roofs include the one-story building in the front of the property and the residence in the rear, and then the gray roof is the rectangle commercial building. You'll notice, again, that the access from the highway is in two locations, and if you look around the property, you have a former construction yard to the north, which I believe that company is not in existence anymore, but I understand that some of their equipment's being sold around that property. In this property are residential, single-family dwellings. Along the highway to the south are all commercial uses. I think there's a, I don't want to call it a catering hall, but I know they have events here. Two, two doors down, there's a, what's it called? Pure? Pure. And then across the highways, primarily commercial uses, there are a few residential use on the side streets. If you flip to the next page... So I'm standing in the parking lot, and I'm looking to the left, and you'll see the commercial building with the two overhead doors. I call that more or less the main building. And then in the right side of the photo is the residence, which is a brick building. On the bottom, you'll see the residence is now on the left, and then I'm looking, you know, to the right property line, and you'll see the two of the trailers there and a couple of cars just parked on the property. If you go to the next page... This building, this says no parking on it, but that's that one-story building that's along the highway. That's used for storage of goods, and you'll see the top right photo. The reason I took that photo is to show you that there actually is some grass on this property. It's very limited. It's actually behind the residential building in the back, so that photo is looking behind the residence. The next photo on the bottom shows a fence and some trees. The reason I took that photo is I'm standing at the back corner of the, I'll call it the warehouse building, and I'm looking toward the residential dwellings behind the property to show you what the view is, that there is a fence there and there is some buffering slash screening so that those houses that are there today really don't have a very good view of this building. And then the last photo was stay in the center of the lot, and I'm just looking out toward Route thirty-five. You'll see there's a old sign, you know, you see the frame in the distance. So... Any questions at this point?
Just be careful, you're keeping the residence, the residence is...
You're one step ahead of me. I'm, I'm about to jump into what's proposed.
Too quick today.
Yeah. So I just covered pretty much everything that's going on on the property today. Yeah.
The, the trailers?
Yes.
Are they all gone?
They're all gone.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm gonna go over to sheet five. So what's proposed is the front one-story building's gonna be demolished and removed. The back residence is gonna be demolished and removed, and the trailers that are scattered on the side are gonna be demolished and removed. Once that's gone, there'll be a new building which is attached to the existing building. It's an eight thousand two hundred and fifty square foot in area. The back wall's a hundred and twenty-five feet. There is a little notch out creating like a little courtyard area, and the purpose for that is that this building, which has two existing overhead doors, while one of the doors is gonna be blocked off by the addition of the building, we do want to maintain the one overhead door, so we created this courtyard. On the north side of the property, we're striping and paving eleven parking spaces, one of which is ADA accessible, and we're going to create three new loading docks on this building. Two of the docks are back-end docks where the tailgate can go up against the building, and then the dock nearest the existing building is a drive-in door, where a truck or a small van could just drive into the building. As part of the application, we're gonna need to install a new septic system, which would be located in the grass area in front of the new building. We are actually reducing overall lot coverage on the project. It's about two thousand square foot impervious reduction, and we have a couple of other features here. One is a new trash enclosure. Right now on the property, there's no trash enclosure. So tentatively, our trash enclosure is shown on the south side of the property, but if the board is displeased with that location, we have an alternate location, which could be at the back of this little courtyard, which would be acceptable as well, which is well-screened from the highway, because you wouldn't be able to see the trash, because the building would be blocking it. We're proposing landscaping on this property, which frankly has no landscaping right now. And the mix of landscaping is some shade trees along the highway, a couple evergreen trees in the back, and the rest would be, you know, shrubs and that, things of that nature, along the eleven parking stalls, along the front of the building, along the trash area to make it look more attractive. There's new LED lighting proposed. To be kind to our neighbors, we're not providing lighting behind the building so that there would be no lighting shining into that area where the residences are. We are proposing sidewalk along the state highway. Right now, there's no sidewalk there. And one of the nice features about this application are, there's no environmentally sensitive features here. There's no wetlands, there's no wetland buffers, there's no stream carters, there's no floodplains. In fact, we're not even cutting down any trees because we're actually providing trees. So that's a huge improvement. The only relief we do need is that there's a bulk variance for building coverage. We're slightly over at twenty-eight point two percent. We're allowed twenty-five percent. And I could speak about the bulk variance in a couple of minutes. I just wanted to get to any questions right now about the site plan.
Chairman. What would you find the wood was...
There's a row of, these are indicated as... Arborvitae, and then beyond that, just grass.
Mr. Himmelman, if, I would rather keep the red in there, see why you'd rather keep it there, would you be agreeable to fencing in?
Yeah, there...
On three sides?
Right now, we have concrete walls and a gate to kind of keep it in one spot. Otherwise, without, you know, people tend to start putting them further and further away and closer and closer to the building. But the only reason I suggested that we would move the trash areas, one is, you know, visibility perspective, people come down the highway, and the other thing is, it would be beneficial to the operator if the trash was closer to the actual building. They do generate some cardboard, so...
Why didn't you put it there?
So the initial design of the project was in this area, and then once we got some review letters back and we discussed with the client about making changes to the plans, then the discussion came about, well, hey, you know, if this is in the front yard and it's not attractive, an alternate spot could be in this area here where it's more hidden and actually better for the operator. But again, this plan was revised September seventeenth, and those discussions happened like literally days after.
If it's where, if it's where it is now and not visible, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm okay with it, but if you put it where you want to put it, that's okay too, you know, for more...
Okay.
And you would recommend the plant...
For the purpose of the residence.
Well, if you're gonna keep it on the highway, just to keep it hidden.
I agree.
That's it. But if you're gonna put it back where you want to put it, you can't see it.
Fine.
Yeah, we would like to keep it closer to the actual overhead doors.
That's right.
Okay, so let me make a note of that.
The board's okay with that?
Mr. Chairman, just for the board's information, that, having it in the front yard requires a waiver, so they're eliminating the need for a waiver for having that trash enclosure by shifting it back toward the building.
Mark.
Mr. Lieber.
Sorry.
This is yours.
Is it? I'm sorry. What type of plantings are you doing along with the curb line?
So right now, we have, these are red maples, shade trees. We have in between a dogwood tree, which produces like a red fruit in the late summer, and a flower in the spring. And then, as I said, four around the trash, which we're not gonna have here anymore. We did propose arborvitae, but we could still keep our evergreens here. We had hydrangeas along that line, which do flower, and they really maintain their flower throughout the whole season until this time of year when they usually get cut back.
Is there any issues with the site distance? Because you're, you're traveling northbound on Thirty-five, there's a horizontal curve.
Yeah, so one of the nice things about the location is, you can only make a right out, because the highway's divided here, but there is a traffic light down south, so when that light's red, you have plenty of gaps to make a right turn out, and there's plenty of opportunity to, you know, exit onto the highway without having to, like, worry about, you know, oncoming traffic.
And so there's no issues with site distance?
No, it's clear.
With people driving northbound?
No, it's, it is, it's clear, I mean, the pri, I, I would rather exit on the northern driveway, and if that was a concern, we could stripe it so one driveway's in, one driveway's out. I mean, that would be fine.
I'm sorry, Mr., anyone else have any questions right now, or just want... Mr. Lieber, can you address the board's plan or address the issue of the fence around the perimeter? Mr. Fowler's memo, item seven. He just wanted some clarification on separating the, the property from the adjoining residential. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, let me see, here, save me a second, I'll just pop yours. So this is the letter dated October fourteenth from Michael Fowler.
Yes.
So it says the existing perimeter fence is a combination of solid and chain-link fence in fair condition. Do you own those fences? They're right on the line, according to the survey, and I don't know if they predate the ownership that's present on the property, but there was no plan on this plan to replace those fences. Going back to that one photo I had taken, we, we have that board-on-board fence, and then right in front of it is a chain-link fence. I don't know whose fence is whose. I suppose the chain-link could be... I don't know whose fence is whose, I suppose the chain-link could belong to this property, but the applicant didn't install it. So, if you look at the survey, it's literally right on the property line.
Does the board have a, Mr. Chairman, does the board have a preference as to how we wanna handle that with the fence? I mean, if it's the, if the applicant...
At this time, you're not proposing any additional fencing?
No, but I think your planner raised, raised an issue.
Yeah.
So, we want, why don't you address it?
Mr. Fowler's requesting whether or not the applicant be willing to provide fencing there.
Right, assuming it's the applicant's, it's on the, it's on, it looks like from the survey, it's, I think it's on your property, the applicant's property.
I assume the chain-link fence is ours, but the fence behind that may be the...
Right, so to the extent that the chain-link fence is owned by the applicant, property owner.
Residential behind that area?
Yes. Yeah, so I think your planner was making a point about that. And I guess the question is, are there, you know, are there alternate plans for that? I mean, we're proposing anything, correct, Mr. Lieber, on that?
No, there's nothing proposed.
What I was asking was, if fencing was a continuously solid fence the whole length, or if it was, would they be willing to add, just like a solid barrier for the whole length? It's a rear yard for two residences on the right of the property.
And the applicant would, Mr. Chairman, so, but again, that's, if your professionals and the board would prefer that, we certainly can do that.
Mr. Chairman, just for the board's information, your ordinance does require a fifty-foot buffer, when you have a, this type of use, commercial next to a residential.
Right.
The application doesn't need that, he's relying on the existing fences, so it may be reasonable to ask him to at least put up, you know, maybe a white final solid fence along that back property, and that way, residents are guaranteed of some type of solid buffer in that area, in addition to plantings that he's proposing.
Fair enough.
You okay with that?
The applicant's fine with that.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lieber, also, and just to follow up with Mr. Fowler's October fourteenth memo, item eight, is, Mr. Fowler's asking the applicant should explain the loading area will be utilized as a truck cannot back up directly to the loading door, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, I believe he's referring to the door in the existing building?
Yes.
That door is accessible with forklifts. There are a couple forklifts on the site that operate. Once you're in the building, there's metal racking on both sides and in the back, so this door, which is at grade, would be a forklift access door, it's not a truck-driving door. So, the access is really the same as it is today.
Mr. Fowler, does that address your comment?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Lieber, also, just to follow in Mr. Fowler's memorandum, he wanted the applicant to address storm waters collected in the loading area between the retaining walls, and so described the safety barrier being placed on the top of the retaining wall. Thank you.
Sure. So, there is an area, which you'll see in a more three-D perspective running when an architect presents his exhibit, but there are two sunken loading doors here, which we've actually been able to grade, so the water drains out toward the road. And then, on the sides, you have a retaining wall, which is probably gonna be some type of a poured-and-placed concrete, and above it is a guide rail. So, the guide rail delineates for other car traffic that, you know, there is obstruction here, and, you know, the, the total drop is about forty-four inches, so it's just under four feet, which is standard for a, you know, loading dock that you can back into.
Mr. Chairman?
Without the guide rail, then someone could just walk over and fall down into a four-foot hole, so you do have protection there.
Yeah, we have a guide rail.
And I had trouble, I was looking at the contours, and trying to figure, looking at the, you know, the three-D rendering, to see how the doors were sunk, and you were still able to manage to break the stormwater forward.
Yeah.
While it was like, almost three and a half feet lower than the area around it, which was draining forward. It's just that it, it, you still were able to get the pitch back out through thirty-five, but...
Yeah, what we had to do is, we had to pull the seventy-five elevation further into the site, and then pull the seventy-six further into the site. So, in this area, which is, I guess on the left side of the property, that's gonna become higher than it is today, which enables us to go a little lower than it is here, so...
I was having a hard time figuring out how you were getting the water out of, you know, the loading docks, you know, to go forward, when the rest of the site was going forward, and seemed like it wasn't a great amount of pitch to it, but it does work.
Yeah, in this case. Usually, it's tricky to get that water out, but here, it actually gets out by gravity.
I think also, for the board's information, on the grading plan, there are spot elevations that show there is positive drainage, so there's no revisions needed to the plan, the plan does show the positive drainage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fowler, just also, your, your memorandum also, your item number ten, addressed also a follow-up comment on stormwater drainage. I guess you were looking for some explanation on additional minor stormwater controls potentially to be instituted. Do, I was gonna have Mr. Lieber address that, or are you comfortable with...
No. I'll find out if Mr. Lieber can.
I just, generally, I try to look for areas, even though you're not required to do stormwater drainage, 'cause you don't meet the thresholds that require it, there's places where, you know, with slotted curbs or some kind of depression, you can capture and hold a little bit of stormwater, the rain garden or something, that always, that always helps.
I agree.
Okay. So, we will, I guess, Mr. Lieber, Mr. Fowler's comment, he's asking whether opportunities to be stolen, depressed or slotted curbs and rain gardens in the front corridor, and collect some water.
There's only one spot, maybe we could do something with this green island here, you know, to maybe intercept some of the water coming through. You know, since we're moving the trash area, maybe we could make this green area into something, you know, it could get a little runoff, but for the most part, you know, between the reduction in the coverage, addition of green area, which really doesn't exist out there today, you know, I think it's gonna be an improvement to the runoff, and frankly, we do have to make application to the DOT for a highway permit, so they look at that as well, they analyze the runoff, there's a whole new process of paperwork for that.
I know that by definition, you have less impervious than you had before, I think a lot of gravel areas, you know, while they do perk, they count as impervious, and now you have actually, well, regular pavement with no impervious ability to it, so I was looking at maybe catching some of that stormwater, if you could, but that's, again, I, I believe that's the reason why the noise coverage is lower, because of, because you did not calculate in all the gravel areas, they get hard packed and they don't count.
We, no, we took that into, in other words, we did the existing lock coverage based upon anything that wasn't pervious. So, if it wasn't grass, it's impervious, and then we deducted what's proposed, and there was a net reduction.
So, the gravel areas counted as being impervious?
That's right.
Okay.
Right, and if you take a look at the property and look at the photos, I mean, it's pretty much impervious out there, I mean, everything's probably been packed down for decades at this point, you know, just from travel or traffic and, you know, although it's not asphalt, it's pretty much impervious.
So, are you saying because you have to go to DOT for like an access permit, that you would not want to do any kind of a rain garden, that it would interfere with the permitting, or you could do something small?
No, actually, what's triggering DOT is the fact that we're adding sidewalk. If we weren't touching anything within their right-of-way, then we could apply for a letter of no interest, because the size of this addition doesn't trigger any access permitting requirements. There was a comment in the board's review that they would like to see sidewalk along the frontage, and that sidewalk is what's triggering the DOT permit.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on that comment, the ordinance requires sidewalk along the frontage.
Yeah, we have.
If you wanted to request a waiver, because most of the other properties in the area don't have sidewalk, that, that's an issue for you to raise to the board. I don't know that we were saying you have to do it, the ordinance calls for it, so if you don't wanna do it, you need a waiver.
Fair enough, Mr. Cornell. Mr. Chairman, I mean, the applicant, if we could avoid that, only 'cause it triggers, you know, a major DOT access permit, which is gonna slow down, should the board act favorably upon the application, we would need to obviously get that as condition of any potential approval, so if that's something the board would look at as an elimination of a requirement or recommendation, we would certainly be open to that.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think from cloak pure all the way down, there's not a sidewalk in sight, right?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at the first page of the exhibit that was handed out, the aerial view, you can see that there's no sidewalk.
Correct. And I, Mr. Daddio, I actually drove on that part of the highway last week, and I was looking, and I didn't see any sidewalk on those, any of those properties.
It's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Correct.
Fowler, what do you recommend as far as the runoff of the water?
I, I guess, since, I guess, non-structural stormwater's become more popular over the years, when I look at applications, even when stormwater drainage requirements don't really hold, I try to just look through the small areas where they can do something that's non-structural, just make a depression, put some plants in, and capture and hold some stormwater to get it back into the ground. Again, it's really, it benefits the site, benefits, you know, the town, and it doesn't really cost the applicant anything to, you know, to do, and it's easy to maintain.
Yeah, I mean, I can put in some depressed curb, similar to what he's saying, like, you know, in this area, this island, and then perhaps, you know, on the south side, whatever doesn't get in, it's just gonna go out the driveway anyway. I mean, you're right, it doesn't change the cost, if you're doing curb, same cost to depressed curb, you know, maybe we'll just put some stone behind it to break up any velocity of that water, but, yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
So, we could submit something for the board's professionals to review on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
For purposes, you're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
The board is...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, let me make a note.
It's an undue term.
Mr. Lieber, just to follow in Mr. Fowler's memo, I know, I think the applicant testified on this, but the, as far as the storage of trailers and stacking of any pallets, obviously, the new stor, should the board approve it, we're gonna be storing the inventory inside the building, it's my understanding that we're not proposing any outdoor storage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Fowler, I guess your item number eleven, I think Mr. Lieber just addressed that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieber, also, Mr. Fowler's item number twelve, he's looking for a turning template as to how the tra, trailers will safely enter into the site, that's up to you.
Yeah, I looked at that originally. Basically, the turning movement would be to enter from the south driveway, they pull forward, there's a lot of maneuverability area in here, and they could back into one of these loading docks, and then they could just pull straight out and leave. There's only two back-end loading docks, and not all these deliveries come on those sized trucks, so, you know, and they do have smaller trucks that could take advantage of the loading docks, but they're not articulated trailers and things like that, but we did plan for that sized vehicle, should they receive it.
So, you're comfortable that they would be safely able to exit and enter the site?
Yeah, I mean, this is a more or less closed site, this is not a property where the general public is coming in to pick up anything, so it's similar to any other, you know, I don't wanna use the word warehouse use, because that implies it's a giant place, but, you know, just something where they have full control of the traffic on the property, it's either their employees or deliveries, and really no one else from the public, so...
Fair enough. Mr. Lieber, you and I discussed the issue of the facade sign issue, and I, again, in Mr. Fowler's memorandum, his item number thirteen, he wanted us to address that, he notes that there were no sign dimensions indicated, but references that the maximum sign area permitted for each sign is eighty-five square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Would you wanna address that?
Yeah, there will be a building sign, which would comply with the ordinance, there is a, in that photo, the existing sign on the highway, that's gonna have to come out, because it actually overhangs the highway right-of-way, but, you know, again, any building signs would have to comply with the ordinance, we're not asking for any relief on that.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman? So then, you would have no freestanding sign at all for the property, just a facade sign?
I mean, right now, that's what's proposed. It's, you know, problematic to reuse that sign. Do we need a child's sign?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a building mount, wall-mounted sign.
Right, there's something on the facade.
Correct, correct. Mr. Lieber, I don't know if you're done going through the site plan aspects of, but I know that you wanted to address the variances and the waivers that are remaining, and your planning testimony, so I don't know if you wanna do that now, or, or if you're, if you wanna cover anything else on the site plan.
Yeah, why don't we look at the building first, and go through the architecture features, and they'll explain, you know, what the building's gonna be made out of, how it's gonna look, and then we'll, I guess, have a little more question-answer, and then we'll go through the variances.
Fair enough. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Lieber steps down, did you wanna run through my report?
Yeah.
I was gonna do that, yes. Didn't forget you, Jake.
That's a gun there, Jake.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, referring to Mr. Cornell's memorandum of October twentieth, I believe that's correct, although you did issue one prior to that, but that was more on completeness, I believe.
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Lieber, do you have a copy of Mr. Cornell's memo?
Yeah.
If not, I can give it to you.
Yes.
Okay, you got it, okay.
So, just for the record, I guess the first page, it just indicates the completeness and a description of the application, and the plan is being revised, and then, Mr. Cornell notes that he's got certain recommendations and comments of his technical engineer review on site grading, sanitary sewer, water distribution, stormwater drainage, landscaping and lighting, roadway improvements in this lane, if you wanna just run through those, like, some of them you may have touched on already, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'll keep it simple, and we agree to comply with the comments, but I do wanna note that item A six would not apply anymore, that's about the dumpster.
Right.
B one, we're proposing a new septic system, which will require board health approval. C one, there will be some changes to the water service, because the new addition's gonna require fire sprinklers. D one is more or less just a comment, and then, E one, we can revise the lighting plan to comply with the foot handle requirements there, and then, F one, two and three, F one, we gave some testimony about the hours' operation and the type of operation on the property, and, you know, trash pickup is private, deliveries are all private, you know, these deliveries come in through either box trucks, cargo vans, truck to trailers, trash trucks for trash pickup, and then, the item three, which is F three, regarding the five box trucks and two cargo vans, and future parking locations. You know, at night, there's absolutely nothing wrong with parking trucks blocking the overhead doors, you can even park a truck in the courtyard here, but we also have room on the south side to park some vehicles, but in the evening, there wouldn't be any employees, so those spaces would be available as well. So, I mean, I was out there today, I, I don't have a concern about having to move to park. There's just a lot of maneuverability area here, and, you know, this is more or less a private site, so if they had to park a truck, you know, along septic at night, I don't think that's gonna be in anyone's way in any, you know, in any shape.
Mr. Cornell, does that address your technical comments? Did you have any follow-up questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anybody have any follow-up questions to Mr. Lieber? If not, we can bring up our architect at this time. He's gonna get into the planning, we figure we'd have our architect to...
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Cornell had pointed out, the buffer is deficient in depth, and you do have some plantings back there, but they're not continuous as the ordinance requires.
Mm-hmm.
I had asked about adding a couple of evergreens, I guess, to fill that in, maybe two more evergreen trees along the back, so you have a continuous buffer.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right, Tony. That's fine, the applicant agrees to that.
Mr. Chairman, will there be any activities in the rear at all? Any planned activities, or...
Any...
Any planned activities in the rear of the buildings?
No.
No.
There won't even be any doors or...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark, you're dismissed for the moment, but don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Take him out. Mr. Chairman, we wanna bring up our architect, and we could have him sworn in, and then we can qualify him. If you want to state your name and position with the company, if you would.
Sure. My name is Satyen Raval, S.A.T.Y.E.N., Satyen, R.A.W.A.L. I work with Sejart Architects. Sejart has been in business for architecture since two thousand and six. I'm licensed in New York and New Jersey, I did my bachelor's from India, and master's from Pratt Institute from New York, and I've li, I've been working for several different counties, from Hudson County, Middlesex County, and Essex County, townships like... County, and Essex County, townships like Stratford, Branchburg, all different township I have testified.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we accept his credentials.
Before you continue, though, let's swear in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and know the whole truth?
I was about to say that in the beginning, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you bring some exhibits with you tonight that have not already been submitted, that you would like separately identified and marked?
This exhibits, these are drawings which are already submitted during...
Fine, so they're exactly, they're not colored rendering, so we don't need to...
There is one color rendering at the end, which is a three-dimensional.
Okay, so why don't we mark that as A2?
A2.
Yes.
That's a color rendering, what's the date?
And if you would just describe the exhibit and the date?
There's no date right now, I'll put today's date.
Oh, careful, watch.
I'll put today's date.
Okay, very good. You put today's date, and then if you would just describe the exhibit also, and then we can get into your testimony.
Sure. You said A2, right?
A2, and just, yeah, put your, if you can find somewhere the...
The sticker.
Well, okay.
Yeah, that one's not for me.
Oh, okay. And just initial a date, if it's a best...
Sure.
What's that?
Sorry.
So, A2 exhibit is today's date?
Right.
And it's a three-dimensional...
Can you please use your mic? So we can capture your testimony?
Sorry. So...
A2 exhibit is a building rendering. On the left side, you see the triangle roof building is the existing building, one of the existing building which is to remain, and on the right side is the new building of the new warehouse with the three loading dock.
Okay. Why don't you give us just an overview of the architectural features, if you would, including the proposed facade treatment, the building, as it relates to the building addition, and your, and if you would describe in detail your plans, thank you.
Sure, sure. So I will go with the layout first, since this is my first page of my plan. So, current building on the top, which is existing, is about 4,500 square feet, 4,050 square feet, and the restrooms are already within that facility. So when we plan the new extension, which is almost, which is touching the existing building, both of them will act as one building at the end of the day. The new building will have a fire-rated shutter to cut off the, the existing building, because the existing building is made up of some different typology, while the new building will be more of the new code and current compliant thing, so that's how it would be, that currently, there are two shutters for the existing building. One of the shutters will be used as mark site, to be used as an active forklift loading and unloading, while the new building will be building, you know, connecting this. So, at the connection, there is a mezzanine, which I have enlarged over here, on the bottom there are two offices, on the top there is a conference room and executives' office. You take a ladder, go up, and that's how you reach the mezzanine. The rest of the footprint of the new warehouse is almost used for stacking of the storage, high pile storage, and the two exits, as per code require, are on the, almost at the other end of the building. So that's basically a simple plan of how the whole function of the first floor will act, and the mezzanine.
Mr. Chairman, any questions about the, what...
Floor layout.
...you testified, the layout? Okay. Good, continue.
So the first diagram shows how the existing building is standing when all the other buildings...
I'm sorry, just for the record, you're referring to your...
Elevations.
Your second sheet?
I'm referring to Z201, which is the existing elevations and the proposed elevations.
And that's dated...
That's dated July 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Proceed, I'm sorry.
So the first diagram shows when the, as Mark was saying, the rest of the buildings, when are taken out, only one building of the existing will remain, and that building, we will connect with the new warehouse to look all of them homogeneous, more synchronized, and the top materials, we try to continue on the padiment of the existing roof, the middle and the base, so that everything will look nice. In sex, this bottom diagram shows the section of the building where Route 35 is on the left side, this is the slanting two-loading dock, which slopes down, and inside, there is a double-eyed mezzanine on here, and here, this diagram shows that the parapet on the back goes high up, so the RTUs and rooftop units are being buffered up from the neighboring properties on the back, the residential property, so we have raised the parapet height on the back. So natural slope of the roof of the one-quarter inch per one-foot variant will give enough height to height the rooftop units. Any questions on those diagrams? Elevations?
So, back to prefab building?
Right now, my applicant, my client is thinking of prefab, but the limitations of the tilt-up panel is being looked by the bedrock company and other, because there is very much of a proximity of the rear fence and all the things which we had talked about. So in order for something to lay on the back and to lift up, and this is almost like 24 feet high, so it's, it's going to be very difficult, they are concurrently looking into the construction team members, how it can be done expeditionally at the same time, so it is still in discussion, but most likely, if that doesn't work, it will go to a conventional steel frame, metal deck, CMU, and I will go with the materials in us shortly in the next page. Sure. So, as, these are basically the side elevations, this is the existing building side, this is the new building side where are the two exits coming out, and this is the rear of the building, it's the rear of the entire building. Any questions before I move to...
Mr. Chairman, because of the proximity to the residential properties at the, I guess, rear of the buildings, what is the fire rating, especially because of what's going to be stored there, of the material, the exterior of the building?
We are making the entire building to be sprinkled, and the proximity is more, it's itself, it's made up of CMU block, which takes care of two-hour fire rating, and plus, the entire building would be fire-rated.
So the enters two hours?
Non-combustible, two, yeah.
Two hours.
CMU will be two hour, it will give two hour, plus the entire building would be sprinkled, so that would be an additional to that, and most of the materials is 2B building, so they will be non-combustible, so it will be like metal studs, not, no wood material or something like that. So finally, to the exhibit A2, the 3D rendering, as I was mentioning, it basically has three parts, the top is more like corrugated vertical stand-in-seam panel, the overall, my client wanted to have the materials in the, in the different gray tones, so that's why I have brought this materials, which are like darker gray material of metal panels on the top, there'll be some sort of like a minor, not a heavy canopy or something, but just while loading and unloading, so that there is a little bit of weather protection, it will be on the three, that's optional, if, and then middle portion is made up of stucco, which will be light gray material, and then the bottom will be all split face or culture stones, something like that, which would be weather protection in terms of snow or anything which is sitting right next to the building. And the intent is to try to, as, again, as I was saying, harmonize the existing, we will put the same end, the front facade, all the three materials. Questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman? All right, say, thank you very much. Don't go anywhere. Mr. Chairman, I guess at this point, we would bring back Mr. Lieber, who's going to address the planning aspects of the application, for the variances sought and the waivers. Okay. Mr. Lieber, if you would go through the variances sought and your, and the waivers, and your outline, your planning testimony for the justification, which I believe, you have Mr. Fowler's letter, but I believe that was his last item in his report, I believe, one of the last items, thank you.
Right, so under zoning, which is section C, item 1, there's A, B, C, D, which calls out a couple waivers, letter A is about parking not being permitted in the minimum frontyard building setback 50 feet. You know, one of the things that's kind of hardship on the property is, unless you're to put the building in the front of the property, it's very difficult to have no parking in the front, so it's more or less that I feel this layout is optimal and better than if we were to follow the strict guidelines of the ordinance and keep the parking beyond that 50-foot yard setback. You know, this sideline's only 200 feet deep, so if you went 50 feet in, you know, basically you're limiting any parking or, or, you know, accessible area in the front of the property, which would really not be a good layout for this type of lot on a state highway. We did talk about the landscape buffer in the rear, which although we're not complying with 50 feet, that's also a existing non-conformity, if you refer back to the survey of the property. I mean, you, you have right now two buildings and a asphalt area within that 50-foot buffer line, so, you know, if we were to strictly adhere to that line, that would push the entire project forward, but you would still have your existing building within that 50-foot buffer, so in order to offset that, and to compensate, you know, we're proposing to landscape the rear of the property, which presently is not landscaped, and install additional evergreen trees and also that fencing that was discussed earlier. Now, I guess the big issue that, you know, we have to address today is the building coverage variance, so in the B3 zone, you're allowed 25% coverage, and we're asking for 28.2, and as a bulk variance, I would characterize that as a C2 variance, so really what you have to do is look at the positives of the application and weigh those against any perceived detriments, and I have a couple notes here, I wanted to just, I didn't want to forget anything, but in addition to weighing like the positives and the negatives, I also want to talk about something that's more practical day-to-day, which is compatibility, you know, is what's proposed here, compatible with this location on a state highway, and doesn't create a detriment to anybody in the area. So, you know, again, you're on Route 35, this property's almost entirely impervious with an assemblage of uses, so some of the facets of the application are that, one, we're removing a non-conforming residential use, which is an important positive, we're also, two, removing an unsightly structure, that single-story building along the highway, we're reducing the lot coverage, we're removing the nine trailers, we're increasing our landscape area, we're actually going to delineate and stripe parking space on the property, as you just saw from the architect, it's a pretty attractive-looking new, modern building, we're not doing something that's going to aggravate or create a downstream flooding condition, and this is not considered a significant traffic generator, so all those, I would say, are positives to the application, but from a planning perspective, you look at the goals of planning in your ordinance, and, you know, you frequently hear about, you know, causing a negative to airlight and open space, in this particular case, I actually think we're not causing any detriment to airlight and open space because we're proposing an appropriate-sized building in the appropriate location of this property, and what I mean by the appropriate location is, if you look at the zoning code, you have requirements for rear yard setback and side yard setback, so it's a 25-foot rear yard setback requirement, and you have a 10-foot side yard setback requirement, and we intentionally positioned this building to be further away from the rear property line because we don't want to create a variance where we need a rear yard setback relief or a side yard setback relief, so that's why I feel like that's an appropriate-sized building for this location. And I don't think the use is incompatible with this area because the use criteria already exists today. This is really a way to eliminate three separate structures, I feel is a little haphazard with circulation and the way that the operation is today, to kind of contain it in one nice, neat facility that's attractive and modern-looking. Now, I did look at the analysis of what's out there today, you know, just to give you a few numbers, if you were to include those trailers in the figure, and I don't know if that's a debatable item, then the client has about 11,000 square feet of usable area to store products, we're asking for 12,300, which is simply the addition of two buildings together and nothing else. So again, given all the positives of the application, I don't think that, you know, 3%, a 3.2% overage on the building coverage is, you know, dramatic detriment, it's probably not even perceptible to most people, you know, that no one driving down the highway would say, oh, that building looks too big for the property, I think we're well within setbacks for the addition, and I think that this design is what's most effective and functional for this client to remain on this property and continue their operation.
Thank you, Mr. Lieber. Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions, or your professionals, or your members?
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a comment to the planner and to Mr. Allen, storage of trailers on your property, there's an ordinance against it, so to count that is not really reasonable.
Fair enough.
Personally, as one vote on the, on the board, I don't have a problem with the few percentage points over, but to compare it with the storage of trailers, that's an illegal existing issue on your property now, it's kind of stretching it.
Do we know this?
I said it was probably debatable, but I just want to give it...
It's not just debatable, it's illegal.
No, no, fair, fair enough.
They're going to go away.
Right, so that's why I'm okay with it.
Any other follow-up questions, any of the board members or your professionals? Okay. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation, I would just like to briefly summarize, I, I think you've heard the testimony this evening from our professionals, I, I look at this sort of as a redevelopment project or a rehab project, given the state of the property as it exists now, so I think with all the vast improvements, the elimination of the trailers, among other items, and the fact that this is going to be a significant improvement on this property, I would hope and ask that the board consider the application favorably. I also would like to thank your board professionals, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Cornell, I think their memos were very well thought out, and we, we had conversations with them, and we tried to address all their comments, so hopefully you're both satisfied on that, but we do again, thank you, and obviously I've worked with them previously, but again, we're here to answer any questions, and we request the board consider this favorably, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to the public.
Yeah, no, okay.
Hold the paper.
Aye.
Post.
Anyone from the public, please just speak.
Chairman, I make a motion to close the public portion.
Aye.
Post.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the application be approved with the variances requested, the adjustments that were mentioned tonight, the additional trees in the back, the fence, and moving the dumpster, and there was a couple other issues, but whatever, inclusive of, inclusive of what we've mentioned during the meeting.
Roll call? Mr. Diaddio?
Yes.
Mr. Allegra?
Yes.
Mr. Giannaris?
Yes.
Mr. McEnown? Ms. Ochengei?
Yes.
Chairman Davis?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to getting the resolution and moving forward the project. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take a five-minute recess?
Well, I, I, when we first came out, I put it on like the Google Voice, and they would give you the pronunciation. So me and my girl like listened to it again, and she's like, I, I don't know. I'm like, Giannaris. Say it again? Does she? Is it these new counts? I said, how do we say their last names? I'm the one, that's why I said to the clerk, I said, oh, you're going to be a little bit, I said, I know.
Planning? Zoning group? It's getting crazy, I mean, a lot of meetings keep getting, and then I'm conflicted. Tomorrow night I agree, but I can't do it all. So I found someone to cover it now. Highlands, they carried, and I'll go to East Springs. What?
We have an A, B, C, accuracy, brevity. I believe the A, B, C's are agreed, accuracy, brevity, clarity.
Now, this is much better, but I got to clean up the day, I, I want to meet with that person. Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, you have to have a sense.
Yeah, exactly.
This has been the intention, was the boost up? Next to the end. That's right. It's a mess.
That attorney's working on something with me, so I want to make sure we're still alive. Booster? I didn't get the booster yet. I'm supposed to get it maybe Friday. Maybe I'll wait a couple of days. They have plans for a weekend. You got a Moderna or a VISA Mike? Are you going to VISA Mike or a Moderna? I think you got a Moderna.
Sixty-five.
No. I don't know, that just doesn't seem right. Me either. Yeah, I'm going to stick with Moderna.
It's really questionable, so like you kind of just.
I say you can mix, but.
I always thought the boostie shot.
I had the flu shot already. Yeah, I got it, that didn't bother me.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Yep, so it's, uh, Boardentown Park LLC, Site Plan four thousand, Boardentown Avenue, Saraville Block fourteen, Lot one.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Craig Feldman from the firm, Paris Ackerman, on behalf of the applicant. And, uh, if I could just, uh, timekeeping standpoint, what time do you typically go to?
Eleven.
That's a goal. That's a goal.
Eleven o'clock, okay, that, that should work just fine. Uh, good evening. This is an application for construction of a, a new warehouse building on four thousand, uh, Boardentown Avenue. You may be aware, there's an existing building on the site. It's a very large building, eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet. It's been there, as far as I can tell, uh, many decades. It's got a long history on the property. It's gone through various inclinations, but as I understand it, it's been in its present form since in around, uh, the late nineteen-sixties. It's been in a sort of existing condition. Uh, what the applicant's proposing is constructing a new warehouse just south of the existing warehouse. It's going to be on a grassy area, it's just a grass field to the south of the existing building, and it's going to be considerably smaller. It's a, the new warehouse is going to be two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred square feet. Okay? Uh, the property, as you may know, is in the Special Economic Development Zone. Warehouses are permitted uses in that zone. Uh, tonight, we're only seeking one bulk variance. It pertains to the, the minimum number of parking spaces, and we're seeking, uh, five design waivers on the site plan ordinance. Uh, we've been working, uh, with, iterating process with the, uh, township engineer, uh, and over time, we've responded to his comments, and which have been very helpful, thank you. Uh, we also, and we have a copy of his most recent report, it'll be updated October twenty-fifth, and tonight we're prepared to respond to all the elements in that report, but in general, uh, we agree with virtually all the recommendations in his report, as well as the planner's report, I believe dated, uh, October twenty-eighth. Again, in, in, in the lion's share of the comments, uh, we're in agreement with, and we're prepared to speak to them this evening. Uh, tonight, we have, uh, four witnesses. First, we have our engineer, uh, who will be speaking, of course, to, uh, site engineering matters. We also have our architect, who is speaking as to the architectural details of the building. Uh, we have our, uh, traffic consultant, who's speaking into, uh, uh, traffic ingress, ingress site, circulation, and parking on-site. And finally, we have a planner to speak to, again, the one variance, as well as to the design waivers. There's any questions at this time?
Is this the Sunshine Biscuits building?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. All right, we're going to mark, mark some exhibits now. Is it that way? So this is the aerial.
This is the.
We'll mark it A-one.
A-one, okay.
This is an aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler Engineering. It's dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. It's an aerial photograph of the site.
You're just doing exhibits, right?
This is just for purpose of exhibit.
I'm just describing it.
Yeah.
For the record.
Okay. Well, how's, while we swear, I'm in.
Yeah, swear it. Please state your name for the record.
Sure, it's Robert Strecker, S.T.R.E.K.E.R. And.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Sure. Um, I'm a nineteen ninety-seven graduate of Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, New Jersey, where I received my Bachelor of Engineering degree. Since that time, I've been working as a civil engineer, mostly in the land development field. Been at Bowler for almost fifteen years now. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, as well as New York, and I've been qualified in front of over a hundred municipalities within the state. And normally I would have a jacket on, but unfortunately I grabbed my son's jacket out of the closet, and it would not be a, a very nice picture, so I apologize.
All right, Mr. Strecker, you familiar?
Aye.
That was for the jacket?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Strecker, are you familiar with the project?
Yes, I am.
All right, have you prepared any plans this evening, uh, in connection with, uh, your presentation?
Yes.
And what are those plans?
The exhibits you want to talk about. Well, the, the plans that were submitted to the board were signed and sealed by me. Uh, they were prepared under my direct supervision. We have a number of exhibits tonight as well that we'll mark when we're ready.
Okay, and you want to speak to your first exhibit?
Sure. Exhibit A-one is the aerial exhibit that we just talked about. Uh, shows the existing site with the property in question outlined in black hatch and the surrounding uses and zones that are in the area. Can I just mark, I have a bunch of exhibits, can I just mark them? And then we can get into the testimony that way. Exhibit A-two. Exhibit A-two is a colorized version of sheet C-three-oh-one from your plan set that was submitted to the board. It's been colorized and overlaid with the proposed landscaping for presentational purposes, uh, and really shows the entire property. If, if you see in it, it has the, the overall property of the bulk table and, and that information. A-three is a colorized version of sheet C-three-oh-two from your plan set. Again, with the proposed landscaping overlay, gives a representation of what the proposed development would look like. However, it's at a closer scale, so we can really see the details of what the proposed changes are. Similar, A-four is sheet C-three-oh-three. Again, colorized for presentational purposes. And I do have with me as well a, I have a truck routing exhibit, which was prepared for tonight. It's called, I'm going to mark it A-five. And is a truck circulation exhibit, E-X dash zero-one, dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And this will show the circulation around the property and how it works.
And your office prepared that exhibit, is that correct?
Yes, it was prepared by Bowler. I have a few other exhibits, just in case exhibits, that we'll mark if we need.
That's fine.
But hopefully we won't.
All right, uh, Mr. Strecker, can you please describe the existing conditions of the property tonight?
Sure. Uh, the property we're here to talk about is located at the northeast corner of Journey Mill Road and Boardentown Avenue. This is block fourteen, Lot one. Property consists of forty-six point three acres and is located in the S.E.D. district. You can see to our north and to our east is the park, that's the Saraville Sports Complex. To the west and south of the property, on the other side of Journey Mill Road or Boardentown Road, we have industrial uses and retail that supports the industrial properties within that area. Uh, the property currently is developed with warehouses, was described earlier, in excess of eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space. You can see the driveways that currently exist on a property, circulation aisles. One of the largest tenants in this space is Burke's Warehousing and Trucking. They're in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space, so there's multiple tenants in the building. Really, one tenant makes up the vast majority of that space, but there are multiple tenants. Uh, the building is set back over eight hundred feet from Boardentown, so it is a very large setback in the front, and that's where that green space is located that was talked about earlier. On the east side of the property, between the industrial property and the park, there's a little string of wetlands that forms. Uh, the park itself is approximately six feet higher than the industrial property. So in, within that grade change, there is wetlands that have formed. The applicant has submitted for an L.O.Y. to the D.E.P. and received the L.O.Y. back. September eighth, two thousand twenty-one was the date on the L.O.Y. So the line work for the wetlands that are on the plans is accurate and approved by D.E.P., and, uh, fifty-foot buffer is what they recommended on the wetlands. So our plans accommodate that, we show it, and we'll get into some details in a little bit about the wetlands. Uh, looking on the west side of the property along the Journey Mill frontage, there's a railroad that runs right along the front of the property, right up Journey Mill. There's some siding pieces that come into the property, but really that sets the boundary on the westerly side.
If I may, that, that railroad is, has its own, its own lot, it's owned by Conrail, so it's not part of the property of the applicant.
Yes, it's, it's somewhat unique. There's, we actually do not front on Journey Mill Road. We, we parallel that separate lot. Uh, there are two driveways located to Journey Mill today, one which we call the North Gate, which is on the northerly end of the property, and the second we call South Gate, which is just beyond the existing warehouse. Uh, we're going to maintain both of those driveways in the proposed condition. There is a single driveway out to Boardentown Avenue. We're generally going to maintain that, but we're going to relocate it slightly, and we'll get into that in a little bit. Uh, so you can see on A-two, which is also up on a board, you can see where the proposed warehouse is located relative to the existing, and see that we really fit very nicely in that green space up front on Boardentown. And what the applicant is proposing is a new, modern warehouse facility. It consists of two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred square feet of space, and I'm happy to say that it's fully compliant with the bulk requirements, setbacks and coverage requirements of the municipality. Lot coverage, eighty-five percent is allowed. Uh, this application, that's seventy-three point three percent. Building coverage, sixty percent is allowed, and we're at forty-three point eight, so we still have room. Uh, so it's not like we're crowding out the zone. From front yard setback standpoint, the proposed building is set a hundred and forty-nine feet off of Boardentown, where fifty feet is required. Three hundred and fifteen feet to the park on the right side of the page of A-two. And on the Journey Mill Road frontage, we're a hundred and fifty-seven feet off of that, uh, off of that roadway. So, again, well situated on the property, complying with all the setbacks and coverages. And additionally, the wetlands that are located along the easterly side, we have no impacts of the wetlands either. We're not even seeking a transition area waiver, buffer averaging for that. So we're able to work within the existing environment. One of the important things to note is, uh, we have submitted and filed with the county. The county gave us a conditional approval on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the county is undertaking, I'm sure you're aware, and I know, uh, CME is aware as well, uh, there are improvements that are proposed along the frontage for both Boardentown as well as Journey Mills Road, and they include new curbs, sidewalks, traffic signal improvements, striping, repaving the roadway. And one of the key things for us is a. And one of the key things for us is a dedicated left-hand turn lane that will align with our new driveway. So, there's accommodations for this project within that county project. We have shared drawings. Their line work is shown on our drawings, so there's coordination between the two operations. As I said, we received conditional approval. There's some minor cleanup that needs to be done, particularly with the survey and some of the details of the plan. But from a technical standpoint, we're well coordinated. And I think the thing that we're, not we, the applicant is holding back on is the check. We need to write a check to the county as part of our contribution for those improvements. Once we get past the town, potentially get an approval from the town, and then we'll go back and advance the county as part of resolution compliance. That's the game plan as it sits right now. And as far as access and circulation, as I said, we're maintaining the North Gate driveway as well as the South Gate driveway. Boardent Town driveway is being relocated slightly to the east. Two-way access is proposed in a perimeter roadway around the new warehouse building. The driveway is also interconnected to the other existing drive aisles that serve the current warehouse. So, we're fully integrated with the existing development and tying in to the driveways that serve out to the streets. Loading is, let me stay on A2. Loading is provided on the west and east side of the building. 52 loading docks are proposed. 52 loading docks are proposed. They're sized appropriately relative to your ordinance. They're at 13 by 60 from a loading stall dimension size. We've also, because we don't really have a tenant yet for this warehouse building, the tenant hasn't been signed up, so we're trying to be flexible with the building and the operations. So, what we've programmed for is a space at the end of the loading docks on both sides of the building. There's a blank space, if you look carefully at the drawings, where a compactor would be located or potentially a walk-up ramp for hand trucks or dollys to come into the building. So, there was a comment in, and I, forgive me, I forget which expert recommended trash enclosures or some kind of statement about that. We're anticipating that compactors are going to be required for whatever tenant comes here, and they would be located within the loading dock areas. One of the key things with what we had submitted to the board is our plans that went in didn't account for the existing loading docks, which are present on the existing warehouse. So, we didn't have that information at the time, and when we prepared our list of variances, we noted that a variance was needed for the number of loading docks. After field review, we found that we don't need that variance. The existing, the existing facility has
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five, yes. The existing facility has 65 loading docks. And as I said, we're proposing 52 for a total of 117 loading docks on the site. If you do the math on the number of loading spaces required, it's 87. So, we're actually in excess of what the code requires by 30 spaces. So, variances are required for that aspect of the project. Driveways, there's a waiver that's required for the driveways too. Our new driveway that we're proposing to Boardent Town is 45 feet wide. The existing driveways, however, both the North Gate and South Gate driveway are at 31 feet, and your ordinance requires the driveway to be 40 feet if the development is really geared towards trucks, which obviously this is. So, a waiver is required for the existing condition. Again, those are driveways that cross over the railroad tracks that are marked in denoted areas. You really can't modify those at all. So, the new driveway has been designed according to code. Now, referring to A5, this is the truck circulation exhibit, and what this shows, what we've attempted to show here is the most restrictive routing, which really is the access off of Journey Mills Road. We can submit this as part of our resolution compliance package if we get approved here tonight. And what this does is overlays the proposed roadway configuration, which would be as a result of the county improvement project, routes the truck into the driveway. We anticipate the truck will circle the warehouse in a clockwise motion or counterclockwise. It can work either way, and then be able to access back out to the site. It's clear. We don't see any impacts or issues or concerns, and it's designed for the WB67 vehicle.
Strecker, would you mind just using both the two exhibits in front of you, point out where the car parking is for the new building?
Sure. The car parking is located along the Boardent Town frontage. There are 76 parking spaces proposed in that area, and maybe it is more clear if I bring up. If I bring up A3, I think you can see it better. So, we're proposing 75 parking spaces along the Boardent Town Avenue frontage. You can see the parking area separate from the main circulation aisle, so people aren't backing out of parked spaces into an aisle that a truck would be utilizing, although they do need to share that driveway coming on and off the property. It's really separated, and that's one of the goals when you're designing these type of buildings. 75 parking spaces is required for the warehouse building. So, the new warehouse by itself, if it were standalone, complies with the total number of parking. But overall, because we have to look at the site in total, that existing warehouse is enormous and drives a very high parking demand. So, altogether, 486 parking stalls are required in total. 288 parking stalls are proposed, so there's a deficiency of 198 spaces. In that total of what's proposed on the existing side, there's a number of truck storage or truck parking areas that are within the property. We've included that in that number, just so the board's aware. One of the comments that we received, again, from, I believe it was Mr. Fowler, suggested that that there may be opportunities on the existing side of the site to kind of better corral what's going on over there in terms of introducing more striping. A lot of the striping that's out there is worn away over time. So, restripe, re-lay out parking areas to kind of maximize the asphalt that's over there. And he also suggested that we meet in the field with the planner, the engineer, also the fire department, who may be interested in denoting fire lanes through that area to make sure that they're clear, and the applicant and owner are fine with that. So, if that would be a condition of an approval, we would be happy to accommodate that and help.
That's, that is correct.
Moving forward, looking back at, looking back at exhibit A2, just in terms of stormwater management, we're able to accommodate stormwater management on this with four above-ground infiltration basins. There's two on the east side, which are somewhat large. And there's two on the west side that are, that are smaller. One fronts on Boardent Town. This is the smaller infiltration basin, which during a hundred-year storm has about six inches of water, and a little, little less than six inches of water. The northwest corner of the warehouse is another smaller infiltration basin. Again, in a hundred-year storm, less than six inches of water. The basin that we have on the east side, it's really two basins, even though it's interconnected. That holds more water. That's really where the majority of the stormwater is running off to. Mr. Fowler, I believe, suggested that a fence should be installed around that. From a safety standpoint, we agree it should be on the plans, so that'll be added as well. These other basins, although the depression is a little, is a little deep, it's really holding no water or very little water. So, I don't think a fence is necessary there, but I agree on the easterly side basins, we definitely would want to do that. From a stormwater standpoint as well, CME has several comments, technical in nature, and the applicant has no issue with any of those. The only, the only bit of relief we're requesting is the requirement to oversize pipes.
That's one of our design waivers.
Yeah, it's part of the design waivers, and the requirement is whatever pipe size you design, install the next size higher, and it's intended to be a factor of safety and a bit of redundancy. However, now, we need to, you know, we need to implement operation and maintenance manual. We need to provide regular inspections. The stormwater management system is all above ground, so it's highly visible if something is starting to go bad. It'll be obvious and apparent. And these are all infiltration basins, but in our calculations, we took no credit for that. So, we designed our system assuming no infiltration. That's the volume that we're holding. So, we think there's redundancies. If the board and Jay are okay with it, we would ask not to have to upsize the pipes for those reasons.
Mr. Chairman, we're okay with that waiver. We discussed it with the applicant's engineer. Not a problem.
Thank you. And then just sitting on a few more items here, landscaping, 454 new plants are proposed on the property, 59 of which are shade trees, nine are evergreen trees. Shade trees are three inches in diameter at installation, and the shade trees are six to nine feet at installation. Obviously, they will grow and mature. The trees that we're proposing are street trees along Boardent Town frontage around the perimeter of the circulation aisles. We have foundation plantings which are proposed around the perimeter of the building. Smaller shrubs along the parking area to help screen headlights from that portion of the property. We are removing 73 trees. And when you run the calculation on the diameter and the size of those trees, it yields 266 trees are required to be planted to offset that removal. As I said, we're proposing 59 shade trees, so there's a delta there, and the applicant is requesting payment in lieu of installing the additional trees. So, that's part of the waivers that we're asking for as well.
I know, Mr. Fowler.
Just to clarify, you're not requesting a waiver of complying with the ordinance. You're requesting, you're saying you're not going to be able to plant all the trees on the site.
Correct.
Correct.
So, you're not technically, you're meeting the ordinance requirements. You don't really need a waiver for that.
Meeting it by payment, yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler mentioned perhaps planting some evergreens along the back retention basins as they go up against soccer fields. Would we agreeable to that?
Yes, yes. I think that would work as well. And, you know, as the tenant gets figured out or identified for this area, I think Mr. Fowler also suggested these green spaces would make nice outdoor amenity areas for the employees and the office space. We agree. We can offer additional plantings or maybe some benches or trash receptacles in those areas as well. Might want to implement those after a tenant is installed, though, but we'd be willing to, you know, when the time comes to work with your office, do that. Lighting on the site is a, is a good lighting plan. We have no spillage off of the property at all, except for at the driveways, where obviously, we're going to illuminate the driveways for safety purposes. Lighting is accomplished by 38 new lights on the site, 20 of which are pole-mounted and 18 are building-mounted. They're 25 feet tall, and they're all LED lights. Around the perimeter, they're all shielded as well. So, the lights are really set on the perimeter curb line. These, I'm sorry, the pole lights are set on the perimeter curb line and focused back inward to the side. So, if you look at the photometric plan that was submitted, you see zeros for the vast majority of the site beyond the pavement. They're very good fixtures, again, shielded and directed on the pavement where they give us the most benefit. The relief that is required is half a foot candle max is permitted at property line, and we're proposing .7. So, we're close, and again, it's at the driveways where this occurs.
And that's one of our design waivers. Request.
There was a, there was also a question about signage. There's an existing ground-mounted sign out on Boardent Town. I think it's located just east of the intersection of Journey Mills. That sign will be removed as part of this. We have no tenant, so we're not proposing any, any signage at this time. When the tenant comes in, they will file for their own signage, and if what they request requires relief, they'll seek the relief at that time. So, I think that's, that's pretty much the end of my direct. Want to go over comment letters or rehash through?
So, as I suggested, we are in substantial agreement with the comment letters. We can go through them at the board's discretion in detail. Particularly on a CME letter, I mean, virtually, I think every comment that Mr. Conley made, I think we agreed with, maybe perhaps a little more focus on the Mr. Fowler's letter, maybe if the board desires.
Mr. Chairman, something like that. I think there were two issues. I spoke with the applicant's engineer. He's indicated he can comply with the technical items. I think there's two waivers related to sidewalk that you just may want to have him touch on before we go to Mr. Fowler.
So, in regards to the sidewalk waiver, I guess my question to you, is that pertaining to the existing building? Or is it also?
Technically, the ordinance says you need to have sidewalk adjacent to all your parking places. Looking at your layout, you've got it on the building side, but not on the access aisle side. We agree it doesn't make sense to have it there because people are going to park their cars, go toward the building. But you do need a waiver because you don't have that sidewalk on both sides of your parking lot. So, it is something you would need. I believe the sidewalk along the frontage is going to be provided as part of the county improvements. So, even though it's not shown on your plan as part of your application, county is going to be installing sidewalk along both Boardent Town and Journey Mill once they improve the intersection.
Okay. And that's our understanding as well. The county will be doing the actual work on the sidewalks, and the applicant will make a contribution. As to the item you just mentioned, the applicant would like to seek a waiver of that design requirement.
The locations shown for the sidewalk appear reasonable, but they need a waiver since they don't have it throughout the entire site, which is what the ordinance says.
So, we respect the request to waiver for that one as well. And that was one of the five I, that was one of the five I had mentioned. And you said it was one on, you said there were two items?
Sidewalk around the site and sidewalk along Boardent Town and Journey Mill, those were the two.
All right. In regard to Mr. Fowler's report, item number one, I think that sort of pertained to a situation where we actually had a tenant designated at this point, but as we explained, we don't have him, so it would be hard to speak to those items. Item two, and I honestly want to apologize, is that properly addressed through our request?
Yes. Chairman, I think you addressed, you know, a number of my items. The only, I have a couple of questions on some of them if I just want to.
That'd be great, thank you.
Go to that?
Yes.
The engineer addressed the lighting. Item number 12, every parking space shall be, that's lined by 18, should be hairpin striped. Are you reading the hairpin striping?
We'll make a hairpin.
And I just recommended that there be one charging station for an electric vehicle, if that was acceptable. Thank you. And on the turning template that you had shown previously, my concern was it looked kind of tight going from the new site with the rear of the building to the old site. Your template just shows the truck rotating around the building. Will there be movements from the rear of the new building through those driveways to the site in the rear? Or will all trucks use that driveway that's furthest to the, I guess, to the north on the slide to enter the rear property? If you go to the template drawing that you had earlier, my concern was move those driveways where you have the cross-access from the new site to the old site. And will trucks be making those movements, and can it be accommodated, or will they not be making that movement?
No, the trucks will be making that movement, and I'm looking at A5 and from the northeast corner. corner of the building into what is now the truck area. And yeah, that's utilized access to rear portion of the existing warehouse. So we can, you're correct, we don't show that movement. We can provide it, though. We've checked it, it works, it works in the existing condition, and we're pretty much in the same location in that area.
It looked a little tight. I thought maybe you might have to soften some of the radiuses on the turns, but if you look at it, okay, and it works, that's fine. I don't need to see a template as long as it's worked. The rail, the rail line that runs by the property, is there ever, is this just rail line, something runs by, it's never, something that's part of the operation of the existing warehouse, everything's done by truck?
Yeah, as far as we know, everything's done by truck.
I'm glad you explained. I was looking closely at trying to figure out where the right-of-way line ended for the road, and where the railroad right-of-way line was, that you did not have frontage, you didn't have a front yard setback issue on, you know, on the side road, but thank you for pointing that out.
And certainly, the new building will have nothing to do with the rail line. There won't be any spurs going through the new building.
Will you have to update any kind of an easement access now that you're bringing more vehicles across the driveway, or what's in place now would hold for you to cross the rail line?
So the easements are sort of lost to antiquity. There are no recorded easements.
Okay, thank you. You agree to pay the applicable for the housing fee?
Yes.
Basically, I think I covered all the items, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Chairman, I just have one question. The driveway that's going for Boardentown Avenue, is that the one you assume would be the most used access to that site, new building? Driveway right there?
For the most part, yes, I would think so, especially for vehicles coming westbound.
About from the other side, you said it would be a left turn lane, there's a turn into there?
Yes, there's a proposed dedicated left-hand turn lane on Boardentown.
This building is designed for one tenant, or is it subdivided inside for multiple tenants?
It's set up so it could be subdivided for multiple tenants.
The goal is, I guess, for one main.
I think, yeah, I think it's easier that way, but, you know, they would consider multiple tenants.
Architect will speak a little more about it, but essentially, I think the best case would be almost, we'd do two tenants. That's the best design, up to a max of four.
You can call your next question.
All right, great.
Mr. Yan, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
First name is Joseph, last name is DiGiorgio. J O S E P H D I capital G I O R G I O.
Please provide your qualifications for the board.
Sure. Graduated with a Master of Architecture from Kent State University. I've been practicing architecture for the last 15 years. Licensed in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, a dozen other states. I currently am the Vice President of Design for Arco Design Build Industrial. I run their architecture group.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we accept his credentials.
Aye.
Mr. George, are you familiar with the details of the project?
Yes, I am.
And have you prepared any plans this evening regarding your testimony?
Yes, three.
Can you identify those and help us mark them?
Sure. So the first exhibit is an overall floor plan of the building. And that's A6?
A6.
A6. Second exhibit is the building elevations. That's A7. And the third exhibit is the proposed building rendering. That would be A8.
Hi, Mr. George. Can you give us the architectural details of the project?
Okay, so this is a industrial building. It's approximately 246,400 square feet. The overall building dimensions are 560 by 440 feet deep. This is a cross dock. This is an S1 type 2B building. This is traditionally a double-loaded warehouse with docks at the top of the page and docks at the bottom of the page. It's load-bearing, precast concrete panels, steel-framed columns, metal deck, rigid insulation for the roof. Generally, these buildings have a loading dock, which is identified as a speed bay. And again, those are at the top of the page and the bottom of the page. These act as the inbound and outbound of a potential truck or user of this building. Along the perimeter of the building, you'll notice the dock doors and some man doors for fire ingress. This plan is showing two potential offices at the southeast corner and southwest corner. This on the right-hand side of the page would be Boardentown Avenue. We're also showing a fire pump and electrical room off this wall here, and this would be a double-sloped roof. Ridge would be in the middle, sloping to the bottom towards the docks, and then to the top towards those docks.
How do you choose the amount of square feet for the office space?
So generally, the office space for these warehouses is 3% to 5% of the total square footage of the warehouse. So total, we have 6,800 square feet. And, you know, we plan for as many uses, right? We don't have a tenant right now, but this is showing some potential office locations. So potentially, this could be demised in the center of the building, and this could be one user with an office on this corner, second user with an office over here. And this coincides with the auto parking that's on the south end of the site.
And is this slab construction?
Sure, yeah, this is slab-on-grade, load-bearing, precast panels, steel-framed deck. Next, we will go into the building elevations. This is exhibit A7. You'll notice a series of horizontal and vertical reveals, and that's essentially to articulate the building a little bit and create some shadow lines and emphasis on the architecture. You'll notice at the north elevation, this is along the dock wall, series of dock doors, roof drains coming down. On the left-hand side of the page, you'll notice some extra glazing. That's identified for the office location. It has a two-story volume for some glazing, just to add a little bit more character to the entrance and to define the approach to the building and identify where a potential user would be. East elevation, this is the elevation along Boardentown Avenue. Again, this is a potential office location in this corner here, another one at the left side of the page there. You'll notice the two front entrances, and then a series of punched openings with some glazing and, you know, a number of paint and reveals to, you know, kind of diminish the scale of this building a little bit. We typically put a darker band at the base of these buildings, and that's for a couple reasons. On the dock side, you'll notice that it's along the docks, and, you know, generally, these buildings have, you know, trucks and a lot of debris that is, you know, getting built up along that dock wall, and it kind of hides the dirt and grime along there. And it's a good maintenance issue where we don't have to paint the entire building. We can simply just paint the bottom half of the building and keep the building looking nice and pristine as it was built day one. You'll notice that, I said the building is a double-sloped roof, right, so it's sloping on both sides. You'll notice that the steps of the building, you know, coincide with the sloping of the roof. I can identify the top of these concrete panels are approximately 40 feet and 6 inches tall at the low point. At the high point, at the ridge, it's 42 feet 6, low point, 40 foot 6. So it slopes at a quarter inch per foot, per code, to the roof drains. Again, this is the conceptual rendering, exhibit A8. This is a view from the entrance to the parking lot off of Boardentown Avenue as you approach the site. This is the view that you would see. Again, this is a potential office location, entrance. You can see the docks along this side here. The existing building is beyond. You'll notice the steps coming down here from the ridge, going down to the low slope for the roof drains. And again, there's just a series of reveals, paint schemes, different colors, roof coping. You know, this has low-y glazing, which will help for some of the green initiatives. There's going to be LED lighting and, you know, the response earlier for the EV parking as well.
Can we speak to rooftop units?
Yeah, so the rooftop units are generally above the office locations and in that first speed bay, and those will be screened, you know, inherently by the parapet of this building. And they'll be screened so that no one will be able to see them, just because the sheer height of this building is so high.
And what is the height of the building?
At the ridge, it's 42 feet 6 at the high point, and at the low point, it's 40 feet 6 inches. And that's above the finished floor.
Aside from the dais, are there some sort of drive-in doors as well?
Yeah, so along the dock side, there are a series of dock doors, which have the recessed dock at minus 4 feet below finished floor. And then there's drive-in ramps that, you know, have the ability for a box truck or something, another type of product, whether it's on a forklift, to enter into the building instead of going to the truck base.
Anything further?
That's all.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, do you have LEED certification goals here regarding any LEED certification?
This is not going for a LEED-certified building, no.
Why?
That's a question I cannot answer at this moment. Generally, if this would be a LEED building, there's not that much that would need to happen generally typically for these buildings, just because of the type of construction.
There would not be much needed to pursue LEED certification?
I'm sorry, Mr. Yan, I'm having trouble hearing you.
So? Pardon me. So there won't be much required, you mentioned, right? I just want to make sure I'm clear, to pursue a LEED certification of some, sorry.
Typically, of this type of buildings.
Would you, would you consider it?
That would be a question I could not answer.
I'm not generally aware of what the additional items would be. We certainly would look into that if that's okay for the board and certainly consider it.
We know what that is?
I don't know what the additional requirements would be, but we certainly will explore the issue and report back forward.
I don't understand what he's talking about, what type of certification.
Does LEED require solar?
No, you would get a credit if you have some sort of solar. Same with that, you would get a credit for having electric vehicle charging station or LED lighting, green spaces, things like that.
Was the original question, green certification? Is that what you asked?
No, I would, we would prefer to pursue some type of LEED rating for the building for environmental sustainability.
He's asking what that is.
Yeah, what is that?
What a LEED rating is? It's a rating that confirms a building's compliance towards environmental sustainability, and there's a ranking system towards that. And it doesn't take much, as you mentioned, again, I'm not an architect, but working with several architects, it doesn't take a whole lot to pursue a LEED rating. And for a building like that, it's very simple to do. I was just curious why you haven't thought, put some thought into that, whether you could actually put some thought into that, because I would think that it would be more favorable for your tenants who are, as you know, many, New York being one of them, I don't think New Jersey is yet, there is a movement towards zero carbon by 2035. Many companies, even in manufacturing, are have sustainability policies and commitments to go zero carbon by 2035. For something like this, I think it would be shortsighted not to pursue LEED, especially being that it, because it's so simple to do. So I would strongly recommend it.
Okay, yeah, I think it's something that can be looked at. And like you said, it is a tenant requirement sometimes, and.
Of course.
Sometimes the tenants do go in there and like to pursue after the building is built for the interior environment, more than the exterior, for the, more of the people working in there. I think we will pursue, take a look at it.
All right, thank you. I'm next to this.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Elizabeth Dolan, D O L A N. Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville, New Jersey.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering from Rutgers. I'm a licensed professional engineer registered in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. For the past 35 years, I've focused in the area of traffic engineering. I've testified in over 250 municipalities throughout New Jersey and have qualified in all cases.
Chairman, I make a motion, we accept her credentials.
Thank you.
Aye.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dolan, have you prepared any reports in connection with your testimony?
Yes, I have.
Can you refer to the report?
Sure. There was an original traffic statement dated March 1, 2021, prepared for this local site plan application, and then a detailed traffic impact assessment from April 5, 2021, prepared at the request of the county.
Can you speak to the March report?
Certainly. In general, warehouses of this size and type are not typically very high-traffic generators. To estimate traffic associated with the proposed warehouse, references made to the Trip Generation Manual, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And this is the recognized go-to source for estimating peak hour and daily trips associated with any type of land use, including warehousing. For this use, we're projecting 54 trips, that's driveway movements in and out during the busiest hour in the morning, and 56 trips in and out during the busiest evening peak hour or late afternoon peak hour. And those are typically between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening, when street traffic is highest. That's when the activity at the warehouse will be highest. The peak hours that we're looking at on a weekday morning and weekday evening will be generating about 13% to 14% of the total daily traffic volume. And during all other hours, it would be less than those 54 to 56 driveway movements that we're projecting. The guidelines for preparing traffic studies typically indicate that at 100 or more trips in one hour, if you're contributing that level hour, if you're contributing that level of traffic to an intersection, then it's appropriate to analyze because you may then change the level of service or operating conditions of an intersection. We fall well below that level at fifty-six as a maximum peak hour projected trip generation. However, as I mentioned, we did meet with the county, I think that was back in February, the end of February, to discuss the improvements that Mr. Strecker was discussing. The county's proposing additional lanes on Bordentown and we get the benefit of a left-turn lane into our site, but that was not until the county reviewed our formal traffic study. They were concerned about the left-turn movement into the site, potentially blocking, I guess would be eastbound, traffic on Bordentown. That driveway is currently not experiencing much volume and during the busiest hour, there were only ten left turns into the site. So someone earlier asked about the future traffic from this new building and how it'll be distributed to the driveways. And we followed the pattern that we recorded for the existing traffic at the two driveways that will be used. We talked about the North Gate and South Gate on Journey Mill. So we counted South Gate and we counted the Bordentown driveway. And the mix of distribution that we recorded there, we use for our future traffic volumes. We made sure that there would be no queuing out on Bordentown Avenue for that left-turn maneuver into the site. The county concurred. We do have a nice left-turn slot that'll accommodate a truck or a couple of passenger vehicles. So we're expecting the driveway to function at acceptable levels of service without backing up or causing impediments on the Journey Mill corridor or the Bordentown corridor. So the number crunching was, as I said, requested at the, requested by the county to ensure that we could have a full movement driveway, continue to have a full movement driveway on Bordentown. And so it's been approved that way by the county. Some of the other things that Rob took you through, just to touch on, and I'll go back to, this is A three. As Mr. Strecker had indicated, we have a full movement driveway existing. It's going to be shifted slightly to the east or north on Bordentown, continue to accommodate full movement activity with a stop sign on the approach to Bordentown. Also, stop signs as you come into this onsite intersection in all three approaches. The idea there is that anybody that's coming into the site is given right-of-way. They're free to move into the aisle to go up towards the existing warehouse or into the parking bay for the passenger vehicles or into this other onsite circulation aisle. We don't want them being hung up in the driveway or being hung up on Bordentown. We want them to come in and immediately make their maneuver through the site. Otherwise, I think Mr. Strecker took you through all of the onsite circulation, showed you how the trucks have been designed to be accommodated for, and the parking calculations, of course, were shy on the existing operating warehouse, but it hasn't been a problem for that warehouse. So while they are deficient, there's sufficient parking for them. And I think it's been a great suggestion and the applicant has agreed to meet in the field with fire, police, engineer, planner, and see if we can't make some improvements to the existing area. But certainly, the proposed configuration for this new warehouse meets the appropriate design standards for the trucks as well as the cars. And we provide the appropriate parking, actually more parking than is required, based on your ordinance.
Chairman, I have a question. The trips numbers you cited, was it fifty-two or fifty-four?
Fifty-four and fifty-six.
That's kind of dependent on the tenant.
It is, yep.
If Amazon says, hey, this is a nice place to have a sub, that might increase that number significantly.
It could be a little, it could be higher, yeah. The one thing I will say is that at this building area, we're at two thirty-five, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, it's a little small for some of those faster turnover buildings. Those are usually a lot larger. But if we were to look at, for example, the trip generation for the existing seven-hundred-plus-thousand, if we took those rates and applied them to this building, we'd be at, I think it was twenty, twenty-two and twenty-four trips, because that huge building area has a very low trip rate. It's lower than the standards published by the ITE.
At peak rush hour, did you count the number of movements on Bordentown Avenue?
Yeah, we did that.
My question is, my following question would be, would it be advisable not to be able to make a left out of that driveway and go east?
Well, we looked at that. We, the big concern with the county was the left-in, because they wanted to make sure people could get through. That's, that's an issue that is contained onsite, so it is, there's going to be some delay during peak hours, but we are proposing to maintain that left, because if we don't, then they have to turn left out on Journey Mill, come through the signal and to get back to where they want to be. So we are proposing to maintain that.
Which is probably advisable and try to cause a peak traffic across Bordentown Avenue.
Well, I think it also becomes a bit self-policing, because if we look at the existing activity that's coming out of there, we've got, let me just get to the right figure, two lefts coming out in the morning peak hour and twenty lefts coming out during the evening peak hour. So it's, you know, it's not that much.
See your point.
You're welcome.
Chairman, just a quick question. When you figured out the number of trips, obviously you use trucks and cars, right? Do you differentiate between a cross-dock and a warehouse? You've been using the term warehouse, but you actually don't have a warehouse, you have a cross-dock. And cross-docks, in my experience, and I'm the vice president of a trucking company, they generate more traffic than a warehouse.
Yeah, this is becoming a very interesting topic in the trip generation world. And the ITE, since the issuance of these reports, just in September, they've issued the latest edition, the eleventh edition of the Trip Generation Manual. And they've gone to, there's another land use called a fulfillment center. And they've, they've fine-tuned that into sort and non-sort facilities. So the non-sort facilities, the trip generation is lower than what I have testified here tonight. If it's a sort fulfillment center, it'll be higher. So definitely, there are, I think in the traffic engineering world, there's probably a need for a little bit more study, because we've got all these warehouses coming online at different sizes than how the ITE breaks them down. So again, these are estimates. They're higher than some of the other land uses within the Trip Generation Manual. But if you've got a full-blown fulfillment center, then I would say these would be an underestimation. You're welcome.
That was a good answer.
It's, the data's, you know, it's, we're in a, in a very unique situation now with all of the warehousing coming online.
We know.
You've got a lot going on here.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, hi everyone. My name is John McDonough. It's spelled M-C, capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Full favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McDonough, you've heard that we're seeking a variance for parking as well as five waivers, the design standards. Can you speak first to the variance and then, of course, to the waivers?
Sure. We always look first at zoning conformance and the list here is long. We're looking at a property with some distinct qualities here. A variance application always needs to relate to a specific piece of property. And the first thing we see about this particular land here is that it is supersized. It has excellent capacity to accommodate the development that is before the board, thirty-three times greater than the zoning minimum. So the proposal here is well below the thresholds in terms of lock coverage, building coverage, height. The cube complies with the bulk requirements of the zone. So this is not overdevelopment in terms of the size of the building. In terms of the positioning of the building, we see all of the setbacks being met. The light and air controls, setbacks front, side, back, all comply. So again, the light and air controls are being met here as well. So it's not the size of the building, it's not the positioning of the building, it's only the parking. And the ratio here of parking meets the ITE standard. You just heard Ms. Dolan's testimony. Also complies with what would be required under the ordinance for Building C. We're looking at a supply here of seventy-six spaces for Building C, whereas forty-eight are what's required. So there's actually compliance with the new component. It relates to the overall development and the fact that we do have existing older building here in the back. The numbers, as they aggregate, come out to two hundred and eighty-eight existing versus four hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-one being required. Again, the application here is providing its capacity for the demand that would be associated with the particular new building. And the building that's there now has operated in its current configuration for many years. So we don't see any substantially adverse impacts associated with the overall parking shortage that's being provided here. And again, underscoring the fact that the parking supply will meet the demand and the ordinance requirement for the building itself. Whenever we look at a variance application, we look not only at the particular attributes or qualities of the property, which I just gave you, but we look at that balancing and whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. And the project positives are clear here. Firstly, we're looking at a link in the logistic supply chain and we all know how important that has become now. We're also looking at the efficient use of land. This is a nice pocket development. This is going to be an infill development on a site that is substantially cleared and flat and ideally suited to accommodate that which is being proposed before the board. It is an industrialized area. It is a transportation-oriented area, so there's excellent connectivity to the turnpike and the regional highway network from here. So in that regard, we certainly see the advancement of efficient land use and the provision for a variety of land uses in appropriate locations. Again, this being sort of a transportation-centric area. Also, project positives, we'll go back to the architecture, that the building itself, as these buildings now morph, they look more like offices than they do the older traditional warehouses. I thought it was a good comment about the LEED certification. I can't stipulate to that. I'll defer on the, actual certification is something we don't typically see developments doing, but certainly meeting the criteria, I think, is reasonable and appropriate. And I think within, within realm of what would be achievable here. But it may be excessive to actually obtain that, that LEED certification, so long as the criteria are hit.
Mr. Chairman, in this day and age, there's no excuse not to build for LEED certification. You should consider it.
To meet the criteria. I don't know if an applicant actually has to pursue it, but I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave that to closing arguments. With that said, I think the project is certainly going to promote purposes of the land use laws, especially Purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations, Purpose H, the free flow of traffic, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, and then Purpose M, our planning goal for efficient use of land. That being counterbalanced with the negative criteria, based on the testimony that you have from the expert sworn witnesses before me, the site will function safely and efficiently, notwithstanding that parking deficiency overall. All of the other aspects of the plan comply. And certainly no substantially, substantially adverse impairment to your zone plan or to your ordinance. We think the intent here is met, that the supply will meet the demand, and as I said, the property will function safely and efficiently. With respect to the design exceptions, we're looking at the lower standard of reasonableness and appropriateness, based on, again, the testimony of the witnesses before me, those five deviations are reasonable and appropriate and also meet that lesser standard of impracticability that basically says strict or literal enforcement would serve no practical planning purpose. All said, this is a really good application from a planning standpoint. This is your SED, Special Economic Development District. This is right on point with the intent and purpose of that district. And with that said, I would offer, based on all the testimony on the app, on the record, the applicant has met its burden here, statutory criteria met, and approval is warranted.
Thank you, John. Any questions for Ms. McDonough? All right, thank you. That was our final witness this evening. And I'd just like to conclude by first of all thanking you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I think we put on a compelling case through our expert testimony, through our site engineer, through our architect, through our traffic consultant, for preliminary and final site plan approval, and then Ms. McDonough's testimony in regard to the variance. Also a compelling case for the granting of the variance, as well as the design waivers. In regard to the LEED issue, I don't know enough about it, but I can say that we will look at the issue. And if it's okay, we report back to the board professionals. And if we see an issue with it, I mean, obviously, money or just timing or whatever the issue would be, we'll raise that to the board if that's okay. But as I sit here, I'm not an expert on LEEDs and a, or LEED, is it, it's a plural, LEED. And so, but it's a good point. And I think it certainly can make it probably more marketable, and so we appreciate that point as well. And so we certainly look into it. With that, again, so thank you. I hope you had a good presentation and we seek your approval this evening. Thank you.
Motion to open to the public.
I'm moved.
Second. Full favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Before we make the motion to vote on this, Mr. Chairman, just got a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chian, I just want to speak into the mega court.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's getting late. Before we vote, just I wanted to make a comment and ask the chairman or Mike, you've been around a while, have you ever required any other developer to build anything to be lead certified? Is that something the board has to have a policy on?
I haven't heard of it until tonight. As far as being zero carbon, I mean, is the building going to give off carbon? I don't understand.
No, but the diesel trucks pulling up a little, that's what my, my issue.
Oh, you're referring to the trucks?
No, I'm talking about the building. The building is LEED, that's great, but trucks pulling up, pulling diesel, you know, so I don't understand.
Yeah, but to tell you, to tell you the truth, and I've had, just for the record, I've had an opportunity to speak to the current tenant that's in the Sunshine Biscuits building a few, about a month ago. And they're, they're packed to the gills. But just to get back to the, to the carbon issue, my company that I work for is starting to order for 2023 electric trucks, tractor trailers, actually, that'll do short runs and pull back in at night and charge. So I know you agreed to do one charging station for electric cars, but eventually a tenant's going to want to do, you know, electric truck charging. And that would be, of course, up to the tenant. And my boss is actually going to have to bear that cost himself. But no, and I've been doing this for over twenty years. I've never, I mean, I certainly don't think it's legal, and I'll defer to my lawyer to make it a requirement. I know we could make it, we could suggest it and have you look into it and, and discuss it with, with the applicant, but I don't think it's something that we should require.
Does it require?
Mr. Chairman, may I? So my comment, there is no law, we can't require LEED. But I just want to be clear what we're, what we're recommending here. LEED is a global, and you can, you're registered in New York, so you're probably aware of it, right? So LEED is a global organization that has a certification system for building sustainability. And my point was directed towards why haven't we made considerations toward achieving, towards implementing design elements that will help the building obtain credits towards a LEED certification? To your point, Mike, this is, I never said that we should require it, but there is no excuse to not think about it. There's no excuse. That was my comment. So you should consider it.
And it makes the buildings, the structure sustainable?
It makes the structure more environmentally sustainable.
As far as what, as far as falling apart or?
No, 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 no. In terms of, of No, 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 no. In terms of emitting carbon, in terms of the resources that the building uses to produce energy, if you have a LEED-certified building, for example, if you put solar panels, and if you make provisions for them, the building will get LEED points for it. Why? Because it will require the use of, of fewer natural resources to produce electrical energy.
Okay, so you're not talking about the actual structure?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right.
That's one.
Makes it a little more clear.
Yeah. And so I apologize for taking the board's time. But again, in this day, in this day and age, there is little excuse to really do that. One way is just to put a charging station. You can do more, right? So again, I don't want to belabor the point because it's getting late, but you should consider it.
For clarification, the board is not suggesting it as a condition. It's, the board is suggesting that you just look into it.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we agree to that.
For purposes of the resolution, if the board acts favorably, it will not be listed as a condition, but I will make mention of it as something that the applicant would review as part of their construction.
Agreed.
I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're being consistent with all applicants, because we have 1.8 million square feet of warehouse going up, and I don't think we suggested that. Just want to make sure.
Every application stands on its own, though.
I know, but, but something like this is applicable to anything we build.
We, we did suggest it.
We reviewed it. We did. But at the, at that, I remember that. We did make mention of it, and they were, they were speaking towards doing something along the lines of it, but they were not, they did not agree to provide it. They were going to evaluate it as well.
Oh, table plan. Anybody else?
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application be approved with the conditions that set forth in CME's report and Mr. Fowler's report.
I'm sorry, one second, Mr. Strucker.
Roll call, Mr. Diadio.
Yes.
Mr. Allegra.
Yes.
Mr. McEnone.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Janaris.
Yes.
Did I say it right?
You did.
Right. Ms. Ochangai.
Yes.
Ben, Chairman Davis.
Yes.
Application approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That was quicker than the 46th.
That was really quick. One more thing.
Yeah, one more.
We read that, we approve it.
Mr. Fowler's got a pitch for us.
Are you good?
I'm good. I'm checking with her.
We have Michael Fowler's proposal to the members regarding his service and fees to Research Club Pure located at 1970 State Highway 35, Block 423, excuse me, Block 425, Lot 202, as a designation as a redevelopment area.
For reasons of the previous development, I have decided to cover the site and need a redevelopment. This is looking more simple, it's going to be timed a little bit more involved in the way we work, whether we do it. So it's more of a considerable, also again, it's going to be the same as the last time, same number of meetings, same objective documents and maps, all in the same format. And if the guy mentions, I might put it in six weeks, and it turns out that we can schedule an additional meeting, or we can work on it so that we get the notice of that time, we can work for the next meeting. We have a short meeting scheduled because of the municipalities and because of Thanksgiving, and we have a good holiday, one meeting in December.
You just touched on it.
What's the cost?
Not to exceed $9,000. Well, mine was $10,000, but you have it here, correct, $9,000.
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion? We accept.
I'll second it.
Mr. Diadio.
Yes.
Mr. Allegra.
Yes.
Mr. Janaris.
Yes.
Mr. McEnone.
Yes.
Ms. Ochangai.
Yes.
And Chairman Davis.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
I know we told you not to have a motion open to the public.
I'm moved.
Second. Aye. Close.
Make a motion to close the public portion. I'm sorry.
Anyone in the public to speak? Make a motion to close?
Just before we adjourn, our next meeting is December 1, 20...
Finish closing the public portion.
Oh, we haven't? I'm sorry.
Needs to be a second.
Second. Aye. Close.
Sorry about that. So our next meeting's December 1.
Mr. Chairman, you have an application for Hercules. As part of the Arsenal Trade Center application, you may recall they're relocating the driveway into the site. That driveway currently provides access to Hercules, to the Ashland facility. Ashland has to relocate their driveway getting into the site. So the application's basically for relocated driveway, plus they want to modify some parking. The council, since I've been, had to recuse myself in the initial one, do I have to recuse myself in this as well?
Do you recuse yourself?
I was in, no, no.
Do you have a second?
Uh, no. They, they may not have sent out the notices yet, since the meeting's December 1. If you say have to, it's okay. If you say have to, it's okay.
Do you have a?
It makes sense. It would be if it's working.
A motion for German?
I'm moved.
It's definitely second.
Second.
Mike's.
Aye. Aye.
Same to you. No. I won't get it.
I couldn't, I thought you might have said green.
Honestly, if I was in this, you'd have no idea what you're talking about.
That's so funny. It's L-E-E-D, all caps.
L-E-E-D.
No. It's a cap.
Take care of everybody.
For the, for, yes, that says the next meeting. So Pure is no longer around?
It's around.
They're looking to just...
Something's different.
With the, with the owners, yeah, the owners want it.
The owners.
Well.
Everybody out there.
I made my mistake. I brought it on.